Everybody, Halloween in order. Anybody want to volunteer to decide whether to leave this?
She almost had her, but she turned around.
I'm gonna stand up and say it. We just do it by ourselves?
No.
Before we even do it, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, group agenda. We have no corrections or additions. We will make the motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by Manstrom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by that's not, all favor eye?
Aye.
All's name? Motion approved. Group consent agenda. For twenty, March twenty, four minutes. March financial report, activity fund, April bills. March table. Any questions or concerns?
One thing I have, first thing I always look at is percent of budgets left. And you know, considering we're after today, we're down to twenty-four days of school. It was very well. I appreciate all of our staff and everybody that spends our money that wants over needs, or needs over wants has been exceptional, so good luck.
Motion by Bernard. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by that's not, all favor eye?
Aye.
Aye.
All's name? Motion passes. All the comments?
We got Tim Allen here.
Oh. Hi, I just got by because uh, I'll give you a little, little bit of background. Nathan Brandt's been our mayor for what, the last eight to ten years? He resigned uh, last week. Um, he's no longer living in the community. And as deputy mayor, of course, put me in for at least the next thirty days to take care of things. And of course, the first day that comes up, um, there's a discussion on a uh, on a city sewer pipe break, um, that happened actually coming up to the school, which would be the district's responsibility attached to the school itself. I know that our maintenance person has talked to your maintenance person and identified our wishes, and they are wishes, they're requests, they're not um, responses. So I, that's one thing I wanted to make clear though. With the new road that's coming out front, um, we put in an ag tech geosol ground system within that and a lot of specific layers and material that we've got within the ground. Anticipation is that there's, that rebuild will go into the street itself. Um, we have individuals that we contract and contract with for that repair that know that product well. Our request is that the city would take on this responsibility, but that we build a school for it, for your responsibility of it. So that's all I wanted to let you know, is that's where we're at with the project. Um, it's something that we do, you know, after school starts. In alignment with that, um, there's a few repairs that we're going to be actually doing around the school area on to lower a few things, and then also that speed bump that Otter Tail put in, um, just, just south of us. We're going to be repairing that as well. Uh, we'll actually have a um, an asphalt company come in and repair that, which we probably do on the side over here as well, which I'm sure that the city could help with that responsibility and some of the shared costs. So what I'm saying is that we'd like to take that responsibility on, repair it, and then build a school for your portion of it. And we'll make sure that we keep you in front of all the costs that we're going.
Have you got any quote in there, quote in there, Stan?
I haven't yet. We have contacted, uh, the person we do is Miami Cardroom, and he works with Damon Bosch. Um, they've been doing for the last couple of years, uh, repairs we've been doing in it. He has requested a, a quote. I'll have it for sure by your next meeting. I don't have it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, somebody's gonna quote it, and then do you know the, what percentage you would charge the school? Or what way you tell them?
Yeah, I, I gotta say, I'm actually anticipating digging into the street itself, and that's where, you know, we, we'd be able to, and willing to share with the asphalt itself. The responsibility is wholly yours because of where it's built. Um, but we want to work with him, open, uh, to make sure that it is done, hopefully the way we want it to be done, to make sure that there's no divots or potholes that are created uh, along the way, long term. And then-
Isn't this a new pipe?
That's a, the one in the-
This is high, so I'm not sure.
Well, ours would, ours would be-
Cause they re, just redid the sewer, and then from-
I don't know how far they rem, remind, I don't think it's outside the goal.
Cause wasn't it, we were lower than the, the drain?
When, when, when they opened it up, about five feet up from the building, they said that the pipe was actually lower. Our pipe running to the street was lower at coming out of the school. It was running uphill to the street. Uh, that makes sense.
You have more information than I know right now, so once we get back into this, I can definitely go back to the council and take a look at it and see, you know, what's our responsibility and what we should be upfront for, so.
If, I wasn't trying to push it on to the city, I thought this was something we just put in new that malfunctioned.
Okay, I don't know about, enough about it either, but for sure, that's, next meeting we'll have that.
Tim, it's been about what, fifteen years since that line was all redone? So the initial hookup is at least probably ten to fifteen years out there, right?
Okay, yeah, I would say that, at least fifteen. I would say more than that actually, Joe. Can't run that twenty fifty oh five range, but yeah.
Thank you for coming, Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Sure? Okay, uh, board comments? Nobody, um, we do have correspondence.
Yep, so there was an email that was uh, over by Mr. Curran there, um, that we received from Vinette Brown. I talked about Vinette at the last board meeting. She's the one that's been helping with our staff over the last two years on our standard-based instruction. And so this was after she had the film crew here. And she says, I'm just gonna highlight a few things on this and you can, you can read the rest. But first paragraph, it's been a week since Tellwell Crew's been at Wyndham filming, and there hasn't been a day where I haven't thought about it. It was so incredible to see all the action. Doing what you, doing what you were meant to do. I am so confident that the footage, uh, that they were able to capture will tell the story of how you worked to create a system of culture and greatness at Wyndham. A few highlights of the day, and I'll let you read those highlights. Um, the bottom says, as I said to Mr. DeCam before I left on Tuesday, your staff is doing the work of teaching really well. You should be proud. Your expectations of kids and yourselves make, make for great teaching and learning experiences. Your knowledge, your skills, your willingness to support all learners. K through twelve is amazing, and I can't wait to, for the rest of our seat region to hear about it and see it, not to mention the rest of the state. Thank you for crafting such a beautiful opportunity for, for your learners, day in and day out. And then a little note from Lucas, who was one, uh, the lead of the film crew from Tellwell. The Tellwell team is feeling fantastic about what we captured in Wyndham this morning. What a great school, and they're clearly their star, uh, star pupil when it comes to implementation of the North Dakota standard-based learning framework. So they, they were, they still had West Hope, Richland, and Four Winds, uh, to do some videotaping as well. But uh, things went very well. We're, as I said last time, we're very proud of our staff on how they bought in. And as we're seeing from outside sources, there's actual, there's very detailed work going on in our classrooms at this point in time. Wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you. New business, very updated.
Alright, alright. Well, thanks for letting me kind of take a few minutes of your time with the board meeting tonight. Um, I was going to begin by showing you here, it's kind of dark, I'm not really sure what I can't wait to get on the screen here. Very light and light. But Minnesota, um, has done a K-12 school library census. Last year, North Dakota had put together this information so that we should have this coming out. So I just thought, I just kind of show some of the statistics and things that they're looking at. Um, you do have a certified and qualified librarian within L M O three here at your school. Some schools do not, I know that you've been for a while, I don't know where they're at right now, if you've got somebody that's qualified that's doing the library classes, um, in there. And it talked about budgets and approximately how many students we're serving and stuff. We have two hundred and forty-four students, give or take, somebody might have a better number on that. Um, and then Amy and Oliver's staff, of course, that can use our library as well. And of course, budget's always the biggest thing that they talk about. And so my budget encompasses more than just purchasing books. It's also the electronic technology, the accelerated reader access, those kinds of things. Um, magazines, uh, audio visual, different supplies, and sometimes miscellaneous things that come up, newspapers, of course, as well. Um, our world is changing. I'm just gonna kind of slide through a few different things as I talk a little bit more. And talking about those budget as being kind of an area that is something that we want to be mindful as we look forward. I don't know if you've set your budget for next year, you're thinking about that at this time, or if I completely miss the both. But having a snapshot of where you're at, I think is gonna be helpful for you guys. Um, I have recently had a book jobber send me samples. This isn't one that I kept, but I just brought it as an example. And you can see that it's a quite thin, this is a thirty-two page hardcover library-bound book, which is what I always purchase for the kids because this is gonna be the most durable, the longest lasting. Um, you can maybe get about twenty uses, they say, out of a hardcover book. Our kids are really good at their stuff. I know that this is one that we've had in the system for probably a good eight years. And it does get checked out, who knows? But you can see it still looks pretty brand new. When I was looking at these brand new books from, um, the bookstore the other day, they are forty-four dollars for one. So you can see where we have a budget of seven thousand dollars that has to go to all the technology kinds of things, as well as what I usually get two times a year. I'll get new books for the kids. It goes in an instant. Um, I've made the decision this school year for twenty-four, twenty, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, we're not even having magazines anymore. It's a six hundred dollar expenditure. Each year we keep getting fewer and fewer. There are less and less kids that come in, and I'm the one that'll read through the People Magazine. The kids don't come in, they don't use it for research anymore. There's databases that are available online, so that is something that, it's, it's a waste of a lot of money, and I could, I can't get it with books for the kids. Um, increase in the material budgets, for sure. I wanted to share with you that back during uh, the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, I had an eighty-seven hundred dollar budget. It was reduced that year, I wasn't given a reason why, but the eighty-seven hundred dollars was reduced down to seven thousand dollars nine years ago. And like I said, in the last nine years, we've had books go up to forty-four dollars for our hardcover piece. So six, six books, and we've won, you know, a good chunk of money. And when we replace books at the end of the years, those, those that have been well-loved, um, those that have been broken, we need to be reading the money, kind of in the system to kind of back that up. I brought a couple of different examples. Sometimes when I go through and I'm reading and de-selecting, this is a series that I bought in twenty-eleven, and you can see how the edges get pretty frayed and well-loved. The inside paperwork of this one's holding up okay. Um, the binding's actually quite still intact. But there are some books that I'm taping and re-bluing and putting information back in there. And maybe the kids can even attest, you don't love to take home a book that's ugly. Um, ugly books are not going to be often as fun to take out. This is one that I de-selected this year because I got a new copy. Um, The Mouse and Motorcycle, very clearly, this is an old copyright, in fact, let me check for you quickly here. Nineteen sixty-five. And so the health of our libraries, the slide that I'm gonna show you next, is what is our collective average date of our books that we have? So I popped into, um, this is through Titleize. When I first started doing this, our average average of our books was nineteen eighty-nine. And we're at nineteen ninety-eight. And this isn't something that I like, I wish it was higher. We're already in twenty twenty-five. And libraries are supposed to be living, breathing places, it's not a museum. So we're not supposed to be keeping all those old copyrights. If we do have the old classics, maybe it's a, you know, Shane, I just got done reading Frankenstein. So we have a copy of an eighteen twelve copyright original. Obviously, I'm not gonna be buying a book from that timeframe, but you're gonna buy something that could be a twenty twenty-three copyright from that original date. And that's gonna help the overall health of our library as far as the average age. We have over ten thousand items in our collection that I'm responsible for. Um, we have about four hundred that are lost over the last number of years. The pandemic was really tough on us too. Um, that spring, when everything got taken out of lockers and kids went home, everything was just so quickly done. And even coming back in the fall, I tried to recover as much as we could. We lost over four hundred and thirty dollars worth of books. And some of the books might have been those that had even been donated, you know, things like that. I go back to, I'm only the fourth librarian at the high school of this facility. So when you think about the number of people that have been before us, Brenda Tamlin, who was in that longevity before me, I've been here for the last twenty-two years as well. Um, she, she had books that she had purchased, and these, you know, like we said, they just need to be renewed and kept up. And this one was a copy of The Jungle Book, where your kid's playing, remembering the whole blue story in the Disney version of the movie. Um, this shows how, when you've got an old copy, the binding comes loose. This is an example of when it should be replaced with a newer copy so that average age kind of goes up. Um, it's kind of fun, a fun tool to be able to go through and look what we have. We're pretty well-balanced with our fiction and our nonfiction. Our students at, at Wyndham do read accelerated reader books, and they need to have a nonfiction each quarter. So we're utilizing all of that there. As you take kind of a quick glance, you can see some of the areas are a lot better than others, and some I don't worry so much, like the religion one has an average age of nineteen ninety-three. There's not a lot of changing in world religion, or not a lot of books that are even going to be utilized in that particular area. Language is the same kind of thing. Those are, you can see we even have a small collection within those. But when we're looking at fictions and nonfiction, we want to be buying the newest, latest, greatest series. We want to get them in a sturdy hardcover library-bound copy that they're gonna last more than those twenty to twenty-five, um, checkouts with our kids. Um, let's see. I can drill down into different areas if there's anything that you see kind of as we're going by. It also shows our AR reading level. We have a majority of our kids that do test out at that five to thirteen reading level. So what we have in that upper range, the bar gets smaller. But Shay can even attest to this, when we did Frankenstein, that was a twelve point four on the AR reading level, do you remember? And we read that one together in class because the language is really high level. And most of our, most of what adults read at, at any given time, newspapers, magazines, things like that, is at a fifth grade reading level. So, um, we have lots of variety. We have a lot better average age in different areas, like this is one on diversity. So I've been trying to buy more books that have to do with diversity. Um, more books that can go into that social and emotional work, and so that we can drive it down into that. You can see we have a lot more two thousands and ups, diverse families, discrimination, prejudices, um, African-American titles, two thousand seven, human rights, civil rights, two thousand eight, immigrants and refugees. So we're getting a lot more, trying to purchase a lot more in that area. And I can put that one more, the social, emotional work one. There you can see, you know, topics of bullying, change, character education, feelings, emotions, things like that. Just not to listen. So it is really a neat tool to be able to use. Um, within our own Destiny system, where the kids are doing our checkout each day, I thought this was kind of interesting because I can look down at my top fifty kids, and these are the number of books that they're taking out since this school year started. So like Ryan Robinson, she's like my star pupil, coming in, and she's checking books all the time. Now, sometimes they can be skewed because they might be the kind of kid who needs to leave the classroom and just kind of relax down to the libraries, which is books. But um, it is kind of fun to see, um, all of our elementary kids each week, when they come in, they take home two different books. I'm just gonna kind of read through the other notes here so I don't miss anything that I was hoping to share with you guys. Um, those K six students take out two books each week, then the junior high through the high school. They can take out as many as they need. Uh, some kids only have one or two books out at a time, some kids have six or seven in a day for kind of earlier end. But they keep them for a four-week checkout. Um, I do have one library aide, Brian Palm, he shelves the books for me every day. So he's got approximately three hundred books each week that he's making sure get put back into the proper space because as I teach the kids, there is only one proper space for that book to be. I said it would be quite similar as if you lived along the same street, but you know, you guys are all along the same street, but if I decide to just switch Mr. Bush and tuck him into this spot where Mr. Manstrom was for the night, he'd be fine, but he'd probably feel a lot more uncomfortable in his own bed with his own mom and dad, right? So then the little kids are able to kind of think, oh, I can't just stick it back on the shelf and I don't which place. So those, uh, thirty-minute meetings that I have with those kids each week, we go through library skills, we teach all the curriculum and library information, um, sciences and things like that. And then they also have the time for their book checkouts. So we talked about that budgeting. Um, we talked about the book cost of those hardcover books, and how replacing them is something that I need to do as well as looking forward to those new and popular books. Because like I said, nobody wanted to take home the old, uh, blue, I mean, the woods are all the same. Um, currently right now, when I looked at the snapshot, we have three hundred and sixty-seven books throughout today. And uh, I think I'd already spoken a little bit about the, it's about a hundred to, to two hundred dollars a book, so we lose each year. So that kind of becomes part of our, our, uh, cost of operating costs, I guess, as much as we're calling. So, um, I wanted to just be sure that you guys had gotten a little update. This used to be something that we were asked to do at board meetings once a year or so. And so some of your younger heads, like you remember that? So I just wanted to give you a little state of the state and see if there were any questions that I could answer about the library or anything on the top of your head.
How much is going to online?
We don't have, I don't have any online books that I are, am in charge of. Um, we do have students who will, like, I have a Libi app on my phone, so I'll listen to books. And I know that there are kids that are having their own, um, apps on their phone, so that they'll listen to a book, like Mrs. Durney's class, and they can do the audio. Sometimes they're reading it along in a paper copy as well as, as they go through. And probably more with the specialized teachers, that's something that they utilize. But it's not something I have not bought an ebook through our school.
You don't have students coming to you going, I need this book for this class, how do I get it?
I only get it in the monolith, so I only purchase it or read, or will get it through the state library as a paper copy. That's all we've ever done. I haven't had enough to really transition into that. And that's an interesting question because that would really blow the question, because then you buy it as, um, a certain, it's, it's not yours forever, like a book. If I spent seventeen dollars on a hardcover, it'll be there until it's broken or dead or ripped up by the dog. But if I have the ebook, you only get it for so many checkouts. And then it costs similarly. So kind of pros and cons in that area. Um, but that's not something that I dealt them to, that's my question.
For the elementary, I can see the, it not going electronic as fast because they love to have that book in their hand. Where a high school student, it's, I can punch it on my laptop and read it any time.
Exactly.
But then again, you run into the problem of they don't give it to you forever.
Yes.
Cause your laptop, you just get a new one, websites can be there forever.
And even when I've used, like, mine Libi app was through the North Dakota Department. Um, they changed that interface about seven years ago. You used to be able to keep the book for three weeks, now they are for two weeks. And like, I'm not kidding, sometimes I get a little obsessed, I would ask my husband, he's here, because I'm trying to listen to Unbroken, and it's a eighteen-hour book. And so then it's on every time we go to Funko, every time we go to Lockton, every time we're doing this, because I want to hear it. And then luckily that was a book he'd already read, so he was kind of into listening to it again. But you know, tonight I'm listening to Stanley Tucci as I'm doing my jigsaw puzzle. You got a little bored listening to Stanley Tucci talk about his trips through Italy and what he's been eating. So, um, yeah, there, there are some really cool advantages to be able to have electronic, you know? It's double my reading life to be able to listen to books while I'm in the car, or while I'm walking, or while I'm doing my list tasks slowly, or something like that, I don't know. Um, but generally, and that's the way states is getting to, I don't think a lot of kids are putting into their headsets, like reading the text. Yeah, yeah. Anything else? I'll watch you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-five election discussion, its location polling workers. Do we have the same workers?
We do. The, what I sent you didn't have her in there, Rosa Del Toro, but she will be here and available. Um, I got confirmation from her this morning, so, um, so yes, they are the same as last year.
Melissa Johnson's not up for reelection, though.
Yeah, and as Laura said too, I obviously, it's you the wrong-
I'm so confused.
You were elected too, and it says that you were elected, which is crazy, so, um, yeah. So I pulled the wrong one. And so it should be, we did you a tenth, twenty twenty-five Wyndham School, eleven AM to seven PM. The candidate for this position must reside in the geographical area of the district that includes the townships of Freeman, Gerber, Cheyenne, and Viking, as well as a portion of Ramsey-Comey. This part of your term is currently held by our special. Um, election workers Kay Wickborn, Teresa Brant, Mary Jo Lasbik, and Rosa Del Toro. And then last year, you increased the compensation pay to one hundred and twenty plus lunch and supper. It had been one, it had been ninety dollars per, been many years, so.
There's no, you know, it's just that, we need one more?
You do have to make a motion, yep, you do have to.
Just to set the, well-
You mean to set the location, the dates, the polling hours, the polling workers, and the polling pay? Yeah, you have to do it all.
All in one?
Yes, yep.
Alright.
Yep.
So moved.
Perfect.
She'll, she'll write it up, so it's on that. Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Manstrom, all favor eye?
Aye.
All's name? Motion passes. Twenty-five point six staffing changes.
So we do have, uh, two resignations that have been turned in. Uh, Mrs. Elias, the first grade, has resigned. She will be the daycare director here in town. Um, we did, Mr. Curran and I did post this-
Mr. Kern and I did post the position. We're just going in on week three right now. We do have a number of applicants, had two today as well, so we're excited about that. And then today we did receive a resignation from Shannon Score as a para. Shannon's graduated from Minot State this May with her special ed degree. She's been in the para. The teacher program, program for the state. And so she's had three interviews for tomorrow with three job offers already, so. Yep, special ed is a, is a great degree right now and so. She knows that she's going to take one of them, we just don't know which one, and so she has resigned. We do have a few para applications in the upcoming, for next year, so. Let's go back on that.
Where do we have like all of our courses?
Zero applicants.
We do need a motion to accept Eric's resignation. We don't have to do anything for sure.
Can I ask, I have just kind of a follow up question. Can I, can I take you one? The school doesn't use exit interviews at all when somebody resigns. A formal interview process. Is it something maybe I should kick around for future use? I mean, I know a certain amount of turnover is normally necessary, but. Maybe we'll find things out that could help, you know, have been all along the way, you know. I believe, you know, everybody's got a good relationship, but you know.
And, you know, the teacher that's asking the time, she's been in front of Mr. Kern the whole time, it's something she's wanted her whole life. So this isn't anything, she sees an opportunity in the community that she lives in right now to do something she's always wanted to do.
I understand.
So this is the first teacher resignation we've had here in three, four years. Which.
But you know, also I think that's under, you know, secondary staff too, you know.
I mean, you could find out like what's going, what worked well for them, what they appreciate too, right? So what one, what was well and what maybe if there were things that weren't.
It's used in, I'm sure science school uses it, we utilize it, so.
It's just a thought, you know.
And I've never filled it out. I've never had an interview, so I'm just. Been a few places.
Oh, they're, I think they're helpful, like the HR director just mentioned that feedback and you can read through them. I mean, most of the time there isn't. Any huge red flags. People are moving for that, you know, whatever reason, right, to her. Opportunity, money, whatever, but sometimes. Even if they're leaving for all those reasons, then it may be a nugget that helps you understand, hey. And maybe, right, there's an opportunity.
I don't have it, but I want to make a motion to accept Elias's resignation.
I'm a motion to accept Elias's resignation.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's like Johnson, Roko, Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Manstrom.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Bush, yes. Bush passes. I'm guessing made twelve or. Oh wait, we don't have to accept hers.
No, she's.
In line.
Yep. Hopefully we'll be asking to approve a hire. Mr. Kern and I can't put verbal timeline to date today. Close is next one.
Why do you have application?
Yes, yes. And. We feel comfortable with it once again.
It's a lot nicer to choose instead of. Rock paper scissors. Any other questions, any other staff changes?
And Melissa did post, I got permission from Ligerwood with our first grade position. It said, I had volleyball position open. You know, or available, but I didn't say it was tied to the position, just listed as.
That's a bummer. I was hoping maybe.
Is that way anymore?
I know.
Okay, twenty twenty five negotiations. I think executive session will be okay. Will anybody make a motion to enter executive session? Motion by Bernard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, Roko, Bernard.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Manstrom.
Yes.
Bush, yes. At this time, I'll ask everybody to exit. We will brief you if we find you.